And to our town leaders Nancy Pugian and Jackie Sherwood. As well as the South Kingstown School Department Tech Committee or Department. The purpose of this evening's forum is to provide the community with additional insight and information pertaining to our candidates' perspectives on issues facing our schools. At this time, I would like to talk to you a little bit about the emergency evacuation procedures. To the left, the right, about 15 minutes. We have emergency exits as well as the back. At this time, I'd like to defer to our moderator, Rod Matson, as he will begin sharing tonight's protocols.
Good evening.
You will each be given two minutes for introductions, and that will be followed by some predetermined questions that have been under a locking key and hermetically sealed in a mayonnaise jar under your free, smooth, porch. The questions will be asked of all nine of you. We will start here and go down. On the next question, we'll start with the second, then the third, so everybody will get a chance to answer the question first. At the end of our forum, and responses will be given one minute. We have timers who have color-coded stop signs for you and warning signs. At the end of our forum, all candidates will be given time to provide closing remarks. This is not a debate. We've had plenty of those. This is a forum to learn your positions. So, as for the audience, I ask you to turn the cellphones to at least silent, and please refrain from any applause after individual responses in an effort to keep the forum moving. So we'll begin with our first question.
Can I ask a question first? How do we use the microphones?
Yeah.
Okay. I see. Thank you. I'm all set.
Opening statements and introductions. Michelle?
So, is this on?
It is on.
It is on. Good evening. I'd like to thank the teachers and the support staff for hosting this forum this evening to give us an opportunity to express our views. But most of all, I'd like to thank you for the incredible job that each of you does every single day helping to keep our schools great. My name is Michelle Brusso. It has been my distinct pleasure to serve the South Kingstown School Committee for the past four years, and I look forward to serving the community for the next four years if I'm re-elected. I'm almost a lifelong resident of South Kingstown. I came here in the 4th grade and went to South Kingstown Schools through the 8th grade. My two younger children were able to go to the South Kingstown Schools for grades 1 through 12. As a school committee member, I consider myself to be a thoughtful, educated school committee member, with all children, families, and teachers at the center of nearly every decision I make. I'm a longtime educator with 32 years' experience in public schools and 15 years of teaching at the college level behind me. Since elected to school committee four years ago, I've worked very hard to further educate myself on the legal and ethical issues surrounding school committee work, attending more than 130 hours of professional development for school committee members. Some of the work I've been involved in while on the school committee includes serving as a legislative liaison, testifying at the State House on local issues. I've chaired subcommittees, and I've served on negotiation subcommittees. We have great schools in South Kingstown, thanks in large part to the dedicated faculty and support staff. I look forward to having the opportunity to continue to serve this great community for the next four years.
Thank you. Alicia?
Hello, my name is Alicia Collins, and I'd first like to thank the NEA SK 832 and NEA SK Education Support Professionals for holding this forum. I am a lifelong resident of South Kingstown and was fortunate to have graduated from SK High School. As a student in SK Public Schools, I experienced a solid and well-rounded education. I was taught to appreciate religious, cultural, and social differences. I was challenged to think critically and tackle problems creatively. I learned to be a good citizen and a steward of the environment, whether it was while building a chicken coop in woodshop class, critiquing Shakespeare in English class, or learning about other cultures during a history lesson. The driving ingredient to everything I learned was the passion and engagement of the educators facilitating my learning experience. I'm running for a seat on the South Kingstown School Committee to ensure that SK continues to offer the world-class education that I experienced. I don't know exactly how we will close the achievement gap or increase attendance among at-risk youth. What I do know is that it will be a collaborative effort. We must ensure that teachers are adequately supported to meet federal guidelines for working with students with disabilities. I will work hard to ensure that professional opinions of teachers, support professionals, and mental health staff in SC schools are heard at the school committee table. Whether it's determining staffing levels to ensure student and staff safety, or developing grading policies, the voices of our educators should be respected by the school committee. Additionally, as a school committee member, I will look toward ensuring that new policies and initiatives are fully vetted before the public, with ample time to respond to the concerns of teachers, students, and parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Yes, nice to hi.
Thank you.
Hi, defenses. All right. Yeah, so I'm Jonathan Daley-Lavelle. Thank you very much for hosting this forum. I'm a big believer in the public being able to see their candidates, see their elected officials, and so we had a forum last week, and to have an opportunity to actually have two forums in the same season is very positive, and I think that speaks very well for the community and are very appreciative of NEA SK and NEA ESP in holding this. So, you know, my involvement, I've got five children, and my involvement, my oldest will be 22 this month, and then 20, almost 18, and then 14-year-old twins. So, I have two have graduated and are off at college doing very well. I have three here at the high school, a senior, and the twins are freshmen. And so, how my advocacy started was when my second daughter was in first grade at Wakefield School, she was in a class with 25 children. And just kind of struck us as being kind of odd that in a school system as strong and as well-regarded as South Kingstown was and is, to have a first-grade classroom with 25 children in it. And that's kind of, that's how it started. I put a call out to the superintendent at the time, had a nice conversation, said you can start to attend meetings if you like and be involved, and I thought that sounded like an okay idea, and now here I am. So I'm finishing my first term. I'm hoping for a second term. I'm looking forward to all the questions that come forward and being able to speak about some of my philosophies that I think are very beneficial to having the best education possible for the children in South Kingstown.
Thank you. Andrew?
Hi, my name is Andrew Gilmartin. Thank you for inviting me here to answer your questions tonight. This is my first time running for political office. I'm running because I don't understand why K-12 education is heading in the direction it is. So like you, I have questions too. Some questions will be answered tonight from those currently or recently on the school committee. Hearing from the school committee is kind of a rare event, so it's kind of good. Some questions' answers will be speculative, especially the future-oriented ones. It is those questions that I am most interested in hearing about tonight. It is important to know how we got here, but what is more important is have the incumbents defined and prepared and paced the district for where we want it to be. Or are you seeing disconnected actions, idiosyncratic pronouncements, or generally feel that South Kingstown is falling into the future? My question tonight is, why are we in such a hurry? We require students in the lower grades to learn too much too early. Their teachers are having to specialize, as there is too much novel content for one teacher to be in command of and be prepared to teach for a differentiated class. Teachers choose the lower grades because they love children and expect to engage them with all their subjects. The upper-grade students are squeezed too. Moreover, they are being pointlessly focused on becoming quote "career" or "college-ready" or "global competency" or "21st-century skills." What do these mean? I have written software for 35 years, and I've found that the meaningful 21st-century skills are the same as the meaningful 19th-century skills. I don't believe we need to be in such a hurry. I want SK to stop falling into the future. I want us to plan, execute, and adjust, to do this in the full view of students, teachers, and the townspeople, and to do this locally and at the state level. Thank you.
Kevin?
Good evening. I'm Kevin Jackson. I'd like to thank the NEA SK Local League 32 and NEA SK ESP for hosting the forum tonight. I would also like to recognize Council 94 and all the good work of our union and non-union partners. I also want to thank all the SK voters for joining us tonight in this important subject. I have the honor of being elected twice to the South Kingstown School Committee, serving from 2006 to 2014, and after a brief break, I hope to be back. I have volunteered in SK in various sports teams over the last two decades, coaching over two dozen teams. I also served on the building commission for the Newtown Gym. I moved to South Kingstown in 1994 with my wife and chose to raise our family here. My children have matriculated through the SK Public Schools from kindergarten through 12th grade. My son graduated last year, and my daughter will graduate this coming spring. My professional experience is business-related, as I have served in various management roles for large multinational manufacturing companies over the last 20-plus years, including sales management, engineering, product management, and marketing. I held a bachelor's science degree and also completed a host of other educational classes. Although not an educator, I am passionate about education, in particular, public education. Public education is the great equalizer in this country, and matter of background, quality public education is your ticket to a brighter future. Teaching is a noble profession, and with the support staff, they are our partners in offering quality, free, public education to all learners. The task we are charged with is formidable, but the outtakes can be breathtaking in satisfaction and global benefit. I believe the school committee's job is to empower the professionals to create the magic that is education and get the most out of every public tax dollar we spend. In the end, it is about the kids of this community. Is there anything more important to our future? Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin?
Hi, my name is Kim Kimble. I'd like to thank folks that have put this on tonight for having us here and the people that came out to listen. I know it's a sacrifice to come out on a workday. My children are actually home having a frozen pizza right now, so I know that sometimes it's difficult to get it all together. I'm a lifetime resident of South Kingstown. I'm the parent of five children. Three of my children are currently students in South Kingstown. My daughter Molly is at the high school, and my two daughters, children Lynn and S, are both at Curtis Corner. I also was a teacher in South Kingstown for 30 years. I worked at South Road School when it was an elementary school. I worked at Peasdale Elementary, at Wakefield Elementary, and at Roat Rock Elementary School. I retired in 2015. I have a bachelor's in elementary education, and I have two master's degrees, one in special education and one in reading education. The reason that I'm trying to be on the school committee is because I know we're doing a lot of things really well here in South Kingstown. It's a wonderful town. It's where I grew up, and it's where I chose to raise my children. Many, many things we're doing well, but there is certainly room for improvement, and I'd like the chance to be on the school committee and help drive some of those improvements. Some of the things I know are going really well. I've heard wonderful things about the high school and the principal. I've heard really good things about the two deans of students that are here, so I know things are going well. We have good PARC scores from some students. We have A D courses for children that are able, but what I'd like to see us advocate for are for all children, especially the children that are having trouble learning because of special needs, dyslexia, attentional issues, and I think we need to really focus on that to help us with the achievement gap.
Ryan?
I'm running as an independent for the school committee, and I want to thank all of you for coming out. I know it's not easy, coming out on the weekday, especially if you have young kids. I have to leave my kids at home, so later I'll have to send them a text to say goodnight. But the kids are important. I'm running because our kids aren't getting a fair shake right now. I appreciate all the teachers on what they're doing. They're doing a great job. We just need a little change. Change is important, because if we don't have the change, then it's the same thing year after year. So I'm looking for support and I'm looking for other independents to get on board as well. And I know that there's plenty of teachers, parents, and community members that are looking for a change as well. So, thank you for coming out, and a little bit about my background. I graduated from South Kingstown. I attended Springfield College and got a master's, got a bachelor's in human services. I've worked with children throughout my life. I've taught fire prevention in the elementary schools here in South Kingstown. I worked in the school system as a custodian, as a teacher assistant, and I've worked at the YMCA. So I'm looking to be part of this great community and having great ideas, new ideas, as we need to have some change. Thank you.
Scott?
Thank you, Ron. My name is Stephen Scott Miller. I want to thank you for this opportunity to hear your questions and your concerns. I want to thank the voters of South Kingstown for their support in each of the school committee elections since 1992, having now served for 24 years. 35 years ago, I moved to South Kingstown. This is my home. My two children and three stepchildren have been wholly educated in our public schools. Peasdale Elementary is just the name of a blue ribbon school, one of only 300 or so in the country. South Kingstown has the Superintendent of the Year in Rhode Island. Each of our schools has achieved in the face of challenges. We offer exceptional educational opportunities, but those challenges remain. Michelle and Keith and I have worked hard to support world-class education in South Kingstown over the past four years. We look forward to welcoming Kevin back to the school committee. We have worked to maintain the support of the town council for public education. We know that world-class education is dependent on world-class teachers and world-class support staff, and we celebrate that through. By way of background, I've been a professor at Rhode Island College for 40 years. I'm a social worker by profession, a trained media, year-end management consultant. I was honored to serve on the Board of Directors for the National School Board Association in Washington for eight years, the only person from Rhode Island ever invited to serve. I've twice been elected as president of the state association and have already been selected to return to that office in two years if I'm re-elected to the school committee. We face challenges, and those challenges will draw on all that I've learned and experienced. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Keith?
Thank you, Ron. One more time. Thank you, Ron, and thank you for holding this forum. I think educating the community is a patriotic endeavor, and as soon as that we hold as elected officials, like your seats and ours, so you should have a clear understanding of who's representing you and who's working for you. I chose South Kingstown as a place where it's my family. 17 years ago, when our oldest daughter was going to go into kindergarten, and we really had to decide where we were going to set down roots, where were we going to make our home? And we chose SK in no small part due to the educational system. Two of my daughters have graduated here. I have a daughter that's in 8th grade, and I think highly of this community. I think highly of this school system and the staff and the administration and the teamwork and the harmony that I see, and we see that reflected in the results. I don't want to put too much weight on test results. I think that's one facet, but by no means is that the entire time. I can speak personally to the education that my daughters received. I think they are critical thinkers. I think they are caring people. I think they have a lot of compassion for their fellow students, and I think that's a reflection of our community. In the time that I've served on the school committee, which is two years, I've been a liaison to C-LAC, I've chaired the wellness committee, worked on the transportation committee. I fulfilled my professional development requirements, and I've been on negotiating subcommittees and negotiating the contract, and I look for your support in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first question will begin with Michelle, work her way down, so all of you have an opportunity to answer. We are an innovative school district implementing best practice. Our staff works very hard to make this happen. How will you ensure that we will continue to thrive and support the teachers of South Kingstown?
I would like to see the teachers of South Kingstown supported in their professional development endeavors. For at least the three of the four years that I've served on the school committee, the teachers have indicated to us through a survey that they wanted more professional development in technology, and we as a school committee have tried to provide that professional development. Also, we have endeavored to allow the professional development of the teachers to be more self-driven as opposed to one-size-fits-all, so that teachers can partake in professional development that is personally important to them as educators.
Alicia?
I think the most important, or the best way to support teachers is to really respect their professional voice in all areas. So whether that be them intimately choosing their own professional development, what they think will better, best serve their students, and giving them some more free-range and developing curricula and selecting instructional materials. They work very closely with our students. They know their needs best, and I think we can also allow them more time in general and negotiate contracts that give them more time either at the end of the day or during the day to collaborate with each other. I think it's been proven that teachers learn informally just through sharing information.
So we do have a job satisfaction survey, and I think there's some answers there that teachers do not always feel valued and supported. So, you know, I think that we do need to analyze why that is and try and improve upon that. What I have done for my four years, and then really my eight to nine years before as a community advocate, has really always been to talk to parents, even students as appropriate, and teachers about what their experience is. So you'll hear some of the other school committee members laud their professional development credits, and I've done enough. But what I will say is that what I value much greater is talking to the teachers in the district, getting that direct knowledge from them, what they're seeing, what they're hearing, what's important to them, and trying to be an advocate for what I hear.
Thank you. Andrew?
I would imagine innovation in the face of the current climate of forced curricula and extremely tight constraints on time must be difficult. And I have not heard the voice of the teachers in my time so far. They don't talk very much at the school committee meetings, the few that I've attended. So, right now, I don't have a good answer, because I don't know, but I look forward to finding out.
Kevin?
Thanks, Ron. So, it's an intriguing question, and it's something that I brought up in my opening statement. By the very nature of education, we have, we're dictated to at a school committee more than people realize. There's federal and state laws. Many parents will call and ask a question about this, that, and say, "We have to do it for state laws." You know, I'm a businessman. I look at this as a school committee board-level job. Drive the decision-making as close as you can to where the rubber meets the road, which is at the student and teacher level. And that's what we advocate for, and I've tried to advocate for. So instead of federal and state driving it down, let's drive it down to the local levels. When it comes to many of these issues, I think the teacher in the classroom, it's best to analyze what that student is capable of. Is that too many tests? Is that not enough tests? How do I deal with that student? What's going on in his life? So I would continue that support to drive it down to the teacher level and through surveys and all the other things we did, let the teachers at the lowest level, at the classroom level, help them.
Kevin?
That's a good answer. There's a few different ways, actually, probably many different ways to support the teachers in South Kingstown. Fewer of the ways that would be very simple to implement would be to respect the knowledge that the teachers bring to the classroom and to the community owners. Sometimes we seek to have other professionals come in and kind of let us know what the experts say. We have a wealth of knowledge in this community, in the school community, and we do not tap our own people to teach each other enough. I also think we need to improve the school climate. There is, I worked here for a long time. I know there's a culture of fear, afraid that people aren't ready to speak up. There are a lot of issues around job security, and that needs to be remedied. And I also would strongly advocate to keep all the teaching assistant positions in the elementary school. They are the nuts and bolts of what goes on, and I think that TAs should also be involved in more professional development to help them address the needs of kids.
Brian?
How to support the staff? We need to get the input from the staff. Let them give some answers. They're the professionals, the teachers, the support staff. They're the ones that deal with the kids every single day. Administration needs to listen to the staff. The school committee needs to listen to what the superintendent is getting from the staff. We need to have open communication. We don't need to have the fear of losing a job because you're speaking your mind.
Thank you. Scott?
The role and responsibility of teachers has changed so radically over the last quarter, sanctuary, my time on the school committee. More and more, what we need to do is to find the opportunity for partnership. One of the things that came out of our last negotiations was an attention to class size, moving lower in terms of the class size. The role of school committee members is to listen, to attempt to create opportunities for that listening, and then to act on it, to follow up on things. And I think in South Kingstown, frankly, we have a very strong teacher union, a very strong support staff union, and they are strong advocates for the needs of teachers. I think it's important to pay attention to that.
Keith?
I'm going to piggyback on Scott's comments. I think it's a trust issue. And I know, I don't have a trade on educating students. I don't pretend to. I don't have a resume that would back that up. So listening really becomes a priority for my role as a school committee member. And I'll give you an example of an opportunity where there may be, to support our staff. At a C-LAC meeting last night, we identified that the first two weeks of school are really critical for students. And the way the contract's set up is the caseworkers, if they pass off their students to the next year's caseworker, can meet in June, but it's a struggle for them to meet right before. And if we could change that so that they could meet at the end of August rather than the end of June, I think that would facilitate communication better. But that's an example of where we can improve things.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Alicia. There have been numerous stories and discussions in the media related to the increasing role at testing places in education and the impact it has on children. As a candidate for school committee,
the end of June, I think that would facilitate communication better. But that's an example of where we can improve things.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Alicia. There have been numerous stories and discussions in the media related to the increasing role that testing plays in education and the impact it has on children. As a candidate for school committee, how do you view the increasing role of testing, of the testing that plays a role in our schools?
I think testing in general has seemed to be a really big focus in our school district. Understandably, I think that's happening across the nation. There are kind of threats that testing is going to be tied to teacher evaluations, graduation. So I think, you know, it is sort of a scary thing, but really, I think things change constantly coming from the state and federal government. And we'd be better to let the teachers determine how to implement things like common core standards into their day-to-day instruction and see how that works, and not just focus completely on the testing outcome, but really on how kids are doing each day, and focus more on the entire child and not just their achievement that comes out of one data point.
Jonathan?
Yeah, very good question. And so I really just want to first accentuate that we have had some victories. And I can remember a few years ago, just hearing everybody say, "We're going totally in the wrong direction and there's no way that it can ever change." And a few short years later, it is changing. So Park is not now driving, the driving force of the high school. We're now bringing in PSATs and SATs. A lot of this came from the federal level, the state level, and I don't think there's a teacher in Rhode Island that cares for PS. And I'm very proud to have used my voice to advocate against her while she was here and to not hide from that responsibility. Yes, we are responsible for South Kingstown schools, but if things are happening upstate that are not good for South Kingstown schools, it's our job as school committee members, in my opinion, to advocate against that. And unfortunately, the people I serve with don't feel that way.
Andrew?
Testing is useful, of course, but what we have been married to the testing has been repercussions within the school. And it's not really about the student, and it's not really about the teacher, it's really about the district. And I think it's absurd to have students be responsible indirectly for the teachers and the district. So as Jonathan said, you know, I think my role on the school committee with regards to standardized testing is to, as a stronger voice as opposed to just a normal community member at the state level. Thank you.
Kevin?
For better or worse, testing is here and it's everywhere. You know, in corporate America, the amount of tests that are being given for employees is staggering. This past summer, my son was applying for a summer job at Home Depot when I offered to help him. And the online application took me over 45 minutes with him. I mean, the questions were unbelievable, and I've run customer service teams. That's what they're doing, and I think we need to prepare our kids for that type of anxiety. And again, go back to the lowest common level, which is the teachers. So we have to let them decide what is best and how best to teach and work with the testing. There's always going to be some sort of dictates from above, but if we can do that and have the kids learn at an early level to get rid of what I call performance anxiety, which is what testing is. When I've coached kids at younger age, they're all afraid to pitch, but if you keep on letting them do it, over time it becomes second nature. So that's what I would advocate for, let the teachers at the local level determine what type of testing has to be done and let them work with the kids, remove that performance anxiety, so when they apply for that first job or have to do that online exam, they're ready to go.
Kevin?
Unfortunately, we are involved in a lot of high-stakes testing right now, which we cannot always control. Tests such as Park, which really don't provide any meaningful data to classroom teachers or families about how students are doing, that might let us know how the district is doing as a whole, but it's not actually helpful. Information is now too late, the test has been proven to be very unreliable. And I will say publicly, I opted my children out. I did not allow my children to take the test such as that. The only assessments which really matter are the assessments which teachers administer and use for instruction to determine how children learn, to let children know what they've learned and maybe what they need some further help with. And that is what we really should be striving to do. We have a lot of test prep in this school department, which I guess helps because we definitely want to park as a district, but I don't think it's time well spent on children's learning.
Brian? Testing, it is something that we need, but we need to have different forms of testing because everybody learns differently. When I went through school, I had a tough time testing. When I was mid-age, testing was not made. Hands-on, that's different. We need different types of tests for everybody because we're not robots. We need to be able to go from September to the next month. How did that student do from September? Did they improve? And we need to keep, we need to test from the teacher's evaluation.
Scott?
The most important testing that is done is the testing that teachers do, day in and day out, weekend in, week out, in order to determine the appropriate progress of our students and in order to remix the instructional process. I do not support Massachusetts-type high-stakes exit exam. I think it loads stress without sufficient payback. I think the test results are valuable as they inform instruction.
Keith?
I think testing really is another tool at our disposal. I certainly don't see it as a fantasy. I like to think of it, I like to think of it in terms of our health. When you get a cholesterol reading, that certainly doesn't define your health. It's a data point that helps the experts identify, are you going in the right direction? Are you going in the wrong direction? Or can you maybe improve things? So I view the testing similar to that, in that if we don't use the information clean from these tests, then they're done in vain. If they can actually give us some guidance and some direction and some reflection on how to improve things, then they're worthwhile. I think in general, my concern with the amount of testing that's taken place in the past is have we identified that too much testing takes away classroom time between the students and the teacher?
Michelle?
I believe that standardized testing is necessary. It's a necessary measurement of student achievement. I just don't see it as the only measure of achievement. I think we need some sort of assessment to drive instruction, to see where a student stands and where a teacher will go with that student going forward. I'm fully in favor of the new movement from, at the high school level, to go to the SAT, PSAT. I think there are many advantages to that. One clear advantage that I can see is if every student takes the SAT, we may have some young people who decide, "Oh, well, maybe I should think about college. Maybe I should think about some kind of academics or studying beyond high school." Whereas if they were taking the SAT on their own, they might not have taken it, they might not have considered it.
Thank you. Our next question. The school committee and NEASK will be entering into contract negotiations in the very near future. The committee and the NEASK have been able to successfully negotiate agreements in the last few contract rounds that have served the needs of both the district and the association in equal order manner. How would you foster this collaborative relationship in your role as a member of the school committee? And if you are an incumbent, what has been your role regarding negotiations and how have you voted regarding the NEASK contract?
So again, I think I would look at, for the negotiations, it has been successful and productive the last few rounds. And, sorry, I think we should look at the job satisfaction survey, look at where the trouble points are and see if we can constructively address some of the concerns that have been expressed by teachers through that effort. The last contract I voted for, the first, I have not been involved in negotiations directly as a school committee member. The first contract I did vote against, there was kind of some linkage between staffing cuts, it seemed to me, that I was not comfortable with. So I ended up voting for the budget. That was the only budget that I did vote for, but I did vote against the contract for that reason, because of the deep cuts that were being made.
Andrew?
Honestly, I have no idea. I expect the first two years for me, we'll be learning these things. It's not something that I come to this candidacy within the experience with, so as simple as that. Though, one thing I can say, though, is having read the recent contract, there are a lot of questions that I have from what I see in the document as it stands. And so I know there's a bunch of questions I need to ask and hopefully, okay, good answers from you guys.
I've negotiated numerous contracts in this district as lead in some of them and also as a member. All seven of us are highly involved with all contracts with all our partners. They are very detailed, they are consuming. There is nothing like a sunrise at 6:30 a.m. at Rhode Rock Middle School, which we've done. It is part of it. You have to be professional on both sides. It's been difficult at times. In 2008, the economy was extremely bad. We had some really deep cuts from the state. Working with our partners, we were able to get through that. We, I think, have had great results from that professional attitude. Our teachers are great, our results are great. I would continue that, the same process where we work together. It's a large budget, it's a $60 million budget. You do have to have an understanding of numbers and things of that nature, but I've enjoyed those negotiations and I would continue the same way, whereas a professional relationship.
Kevin?
I think it's really important that the parties meet early and that there's truthfulness around the process. As a former member of NEA, it always seems that when it's time for contracts to start coming up, that parties agree to meet and then the school committee seems to not be able to meet. Now, I've not been part of the negotiating team, so I don't know that for sure, because it seems like both sides blame each other. But it does seem like there's always a resistance to meeting and getting things going. Waiting for the last minute is not helpful, I don't think that's a good way to make decisions. I would not want to be a broad rock, a cool sunrise. So I think meet early, be truthful, and all the parties need to show up and get down to business.
Brian?
I'm not too familiar with the contracts, but what I'm understanding is that the teachers need a fair shake, and the school, the school district needs a fair shake, and the parents need a fair shake. We all need to be able to work together, meet early. Let's not wait until August just before the kids go to school. Starting school in August is actually not a good thing, but that has nothing to do with the contract.
Scott?
I think that I've been involved in all of the negotiations of NEA contracts since 1992. That puts me in a position to know almost as much as Kathy does about the history of And to some degree, by virtue of my longevity, I take a leadership role in that. I would agree with the characterization that the last several contracts, I think, have been very successfully negotiated. There's been a whole lot more listening than has taken place. I had a, really a very unpleasant experience with negotiation back, I think, ten years ago, and I did a lot of thinking about what went wrong with that. And I think to some degree, I changed my attitude about that and matured a little bit.
Keith?
I've had one experience negotiating a contract, it was just this past year, and that contract, the union passed it on the first vote unanimously, so I'm proud of the part I had of that. And I know, what I came away with from the experience was, when there's shared common ground and when the focus is on the student, then it makes the negotiation a lot easier. You start with an understanding that we're all coming from a place where we need to make sure that the student is first and foremost. And I'm disappointed to hear that there were difficult contracts in the past, I'm glad I wasn't part of them. The experience I had and the knowledge I gained from that was one of common ground, and I look forward to using my experience in the future.
Michelle?
During my four years on the school committee, I have served not ever as a lead negotiator, but as a member of the negotiating team for all three of the unions involved in the school district. I think that the results of the bargaining that we have done in those four years, where both sides, no matter which group we were negotiating with, both sides were listening to the other. I believe there's an expression called interest-based bargaining. I think I have that expression correct. But everybody, both sides treated one another in a respectful and professional manner and listened to the needs of, the teachers listened to the needs of the district, and we listened to them. And the same with the support staff, and the same with Council 94. I would very much want to continue with that type of bargaining.
Alicia?
Of course, I have no experience negotiating teacher contracts, so I would probably look to the existing school committee members who do have experience and look for guidance. I also research the topic as best as I can from all angles. But I would say that balancing a budget is an arduous task. We have to, you know, keep SK affordable so that we have students, we have families in town, we have students, and declining enrollment is a real issue. But I will say that teachers and support staff are certainly the backbone of our schools, so I'd want to make sure that we're doing, we're meeting their needs, we're carving out more time for them, just in general. I think teachers are spread pretty thin and support staff are spread pretty thin in this district, so I would keep that in mind. Thanks.
Our next question, we'll be started by Andrew. The district has invested money and resources into bringing greater access to technology to our students and staff in South Kingstown in the last few years as part of a trend toward a more 21st century learning. What is your opinion on the allocation of money and resources toward this venture? And what would your vision be on the funding of this initiative in the coming years?
Wow, something I could talk about. So I don't think there is a great need to put laptops in every student's hand. My involvement in the one-to-one project started a few years ago, and what I saw back then was that the one-to-one program was really about making sure we had enough laptops to park, and really wasn't about the pedagogical advantage of having these machines. And so I personally think we've put money in the wrong place right now. I would much rather see the money put elsewhere. Does it help at all? The question is to you, are you finding it helpful to have your students bring a laptop to classes every day?
Kevin?
So I would absolutely advocate for technology in the classroom. Full disclosure, what I basically do for my job is build data sets, which is essentially...
Full disclosure, what I basically do for my job is build data sets, which is essentially what runs the infrastructure, that runs the internet. I won't bore you with that, but that's what I do, so I'm coming at it from that perspective. But technology is everywhere. These are everywhere. You can sit here, and I can tell you right now, anybody can ask me a question, and I can look it up and probably get a pretty good answer pretty quickly. Having our students get comfortable with that technology is helpful, but more importantly, with Google Classroom and other innovative ideas, it allows the teacher to have all those tools, so that as they're doing differentiated instruction, they can work with different kids. Now, if the kid doesn't want to use the device, that's fine, there's other ways to do it, that's differentiated instruction, but have that tool, have that device. And technology is, you know, it's here to stay. The more our kids get used to it, I think the better they'll do in the long run with their futures.
Kevin?
Technology is a tool, it's one tool. I don't think it should be replacing live humans that can respond to kids and respond to kids' needs, but I do think it's a tool especially suitable for upper grades. I don't necessarily think there should be a big push to have a lot of technology with the other kids. Frankly, I now see kids have a 15-minute break outside and fun and play, and have time with lots from their kindergarten, and they have time with real books in their hands, not necessarily gadget that feeds for them. But I do think for the upper grade children, you know, perhaps middle school on, having resources such as computers and laptops, that's helpful.
Brian?
Technology, I believe that it's a tool, like Kim says, and the elementary grade, it can be a tool for the teachers, but I really don't think we need to be having each student in the entire district with a laptop. The older grades, middle school and high school, that's acceptable, because they're learning to time management. The younger grades, they need to be able to play outside, get that energy out that they have, and learn to read, write with pencils. I don't know if there's pencils in schools anymore, because there's all these computers.
Thank you. Scott?
I've been part of the discussions on the school committee about the use of technology that go back almost 20 years. I've been a strong supporter of the One-to-One initiative here at South Kingstown. I think that we exercised good judgment in that process. We weren't the first district that moved in that direction. We weren't the second, in fact, we were the 14th district. We looked at the experience of other districts. I do support making available computers into the elementary school, and there's an extraordinary amount of data about the digital divide children growing up for and not having computers at home. And this is an opportunity to begin to deal with the achievement gap that is sometimes experienced by children growing up in poverty.
Keith?
I've been in support of technology, with the understanding, again, it's just a tool at our disposal, so if we use it correctly, it can be a wonderful experience. And we think that it's going to replace other aspects of our education, I think that's a fool's error. Equity, I think, is an issue that has been driving the technology, and it started really, actually, it started with C-LAC, describing how some students interact best in a classroom with that technology. And then, it became a matter of how can we make sure that all students have access to this technology, and that's really what was driving the One-to-One in the original conversation. So, for me, having these laptops for all of our students is really just an equity issue. I certainly don't think that it replaces teaching in any way, but I certainly think it can level play.
Michelle?
I think it's our job as educators, and therefore as the school committee, to support our educators. It's our job to educate our young people for the 21st century. And as some of my colleagues here at the table have said, technology is here to stay. I also agree with Mr. Borhavon's statement regarding the equity issue. When I first came on the school committee, we were talking about a "bring your own device" policy. I could not support that, because I felt that it provided too many opportunities, and opportunities, not the best word right there, for the students that had good technology and students that did not. I was in full support of the One-to-One initiative, and I really firmly believe that equating screen time, which I know many parents are about, with what goes on in elementary school classrooms with technology, is doing a disservice to our educators.
Thank you. Alicia?
So, I guess, we really need more information on where we're going with technology in the classroom. I think it's okay at the high school level, but once we start pushing towards the elementary grades, I think we should take a little more pause. I don't think there should be a serious rush towards it. There really isn't any evidence in peer-reviewed journals that One-to-One laptops help close any divides, whether it's equity as far as children living in poverty or students with disabilities. So, I don't know that we can say that that's definitely happening, but I would say that we need more information on the vision of where SK is going. If we're going to, you know, increase class size as a result of it, as has been seen in other districts, I think that would be a mistake. But really, without a clear vision, it's hard to say, you know, what best practice is with One-to-One technology.
Jonathan?
Yes. Very complicated subject, and I just want to build off of what Alicia was saying a little bit, that we really have not had full conversations about this. And I think how this started was with the conversation about BYOD, and truthfully, I'm not sure why that was brought to the school committee table, because it really was never a good idea, it was not going to be equitable. So I think that's where some of the confusion comes from, and we really have never had the conversation at the school committee table about where we are, and where we want to go. So I think people, a lot of times, say, "Are we compromising for the technology? Are we losing staff because we're investing in technology?" And so I think we really need to have the full conversation about that, where that balance is, and how we're working it all out, and that conversation hasn't happened. I don't know.
All right. Just a quick reminder to all of the candidates to make sure that their mics are on and they're speaking nice and loud to make it all the way up there, to the backside of the auditorium. Our next question is about another key district initiative in this school system, is the dual-language immersion program. Could you share with us what you know about the program, and how do you see the allocation of funds and resources for future growth of this program? We begin with Kevin.
So I was on the school committee when DLI was first brought to the table. I did participate in the community conversations for DLI. Initially, we did have a number of concerns. We addressed them as we went along, and now I believe DLI is showing its growth. Just last week at school committee meeting, we did have somebody come to the microphone and say that they went to our schools versus a charter school because of DLI. I'm very proud of the initiation of DLI. I did not vote for it, but I would have if I was on the committee. For better or worse, again, we are competing with charter schools for many of these students. These types of innovative programs will help us. Additionally, it will help people who want to have a good education for their children and move to South Kingstown. We're a school with a university population, so I think we can get more of those students to come to our district. And as from a parent moving into a town, I can see where someone says, "This is a program, I'm going to move into South Kingstown." And quite frankly, every student we can keep in this district is for the best.
Kevin?
I think that the dual-language immersion program is very positive. I think it's one of the great things that's happened recently in our town. We know that kids learn languages best when they learn young. I have two daughters that came over from Haiti when I adopted them. They spoke no English, but immersion to our family, they hit school, they learn the language very quickly, so we know it works. I am concerned about the fact that it's not equitable. It's only open to children that attend to schools. I know with parents, families with transport, that's not as possible, so we have children that are not part of this program. I think that's unfair, but perhaps we should have waited until we could have included everyone. I'm also concerned about the students that are older, that will have to learn language, maybe eighth grade or in high school, that's very hard. Could we do something for those kids? Would it be either maybe an after-school club, something like that, to help them with their language skills that were meeting the needs of all of our students?
Brian?
In the beginning, I wasn't for it, but I've heard parents and Kathy speak about it, and it seems to be working, we just need it in the entire district, in all the elementary schools. The kids definitely do learn quicker at the younger age, and I'm definitely in support of it. We just need to get it in the entire district.
Scott?
I've been part of the school committee that has supported dual-language immersion. I have voted for it every time it has come to the table, and it really is part of South Kingstown having a world-class educational program. It's hard to imagine a world-class educational program, and you can start taking a second language in middle school. The concern raised with regard to making it available to everybody is a fiscal concern, and it is one of the truths about being on the school committee, that there are wonderful ideas, and then you have to figure out how you're going to fund them. This was the way to grow that idea, to debug the idea. I support, frankly, the expansion of DLI, but I also supported starting in the schools that we began in.
Keith?
Thank you. I've always been in support of DLI, and I think it stems from me being a tennis fan, and I know that's a curious statement, but I watch tennis, and regardless of who wins, maybe they're Slovenian, maybe they're Hungarian, maybe they're Japanese, they come to the microphone, and they speak in English, and they speak it fluently. And that's evidence of an educational system that valued multiple languages. And I think to have world citizens and world students, it's imperative that they speak more than one language. In the remainder of my time, I'm going to brag, and I'm going to brag about this school system. My daughter was not in the DLI program, she graduated four years ago, and she's going to graduate with a dual major, and one of her majors will be Spanish. Not because that was her choice, but because she got so far in her high school education that she was able to major in it when she went to college, and that's credited this district.
Michelle?
I was fully in support of the implementation of the dual-language program. And while the Pollyanna in me would have liked to have seen it go K-12, every school in our district, right off the bat, the realist in me says that was not possible. And so I also supported the way we moved into this slowly, by implementing it in only two of our schools, with giving us an opportunity to work out some of the bugs, to see what it was like to staff this program. Dual-language immersion has brought more students to our district, who have chosen our district over other districts, or chosen to live here, or chosen us over charter schools. And the research shows the benefits go beyond the speaking of a second language. I actually read something recently that speaking a second language staves off Alzheimer's disease. I wish I had one.
Alicia?
I think the DLI program has been a success. I have heard from constituents that they were thinking of sending their student to a charter school or Montessori school, and they chose South Kingstown, so I applaud the school committee for their work in this regard. But I will say, we can't really have it all, and I feel like we're kind of spreading ourselves thin with all these initiatives. The laptop initiative at the high school, you know, I don't even know if it was fully implemented when we started an initiative at the middle school, and now we're talking about starting an initiative at the elementary school with One-to-One devices. And I think we should just focus on one thing at a time, and right now, maybe focus on DLI, make sure it is most equitable, that if a student from another district, sorry, another elementary school wants to attend, there's some sort of transportation provided, or maybe we can move it to other elementary schools. And make sure that, you know, students with disabilities are still able to access the DLI program before we invest in more laptops.
Jonathan?
Yep, thank you. Yes, I do support the DLI program. I did see an equity concern, so my initial thought was to see it more of a special, quote-unquote, offered at the elementary school, so it would be available on a lesser degree, but to all students. I do hear the popularity of the program, but I think that I will be a little bit of a voice of a realist here, that not everybody has wanted to opt into the program, so I think we're going to need to make sure that we do keep that balance, a little bit like Alicia says, and also be respectful of the people who choose not to. The balance of my time, I just want to say, on the technology, I do have a three-and-a-half-minute YouTube video that talks a little bit about my thoughts on technological use in the district and in general. I don't know how to find it. I know how to find it, I don't know how to tell you how to find it, but you can also go to Facebook, my personal page, or my JDL School Committee Member page, and find it there.
Andrew?
So who wouldn't want their kids to speak a second language? I certainly do, and my kids speak a little bit of German and a little bit of English. But I find it interesting that DLI and One-to-One was pushed before, like, the gap closing initiative. And so, part of my concerns are, where are the priorities? There is...that's it.
All right, our next question deals with student enrollment. While student enrollment has decreased in recent years, the need for support within the classroom and supervision during unstructured times has increased. However, the support staff to student ratio has steadily decreased. What do you foresee the role of teaching assistants being in the future? Ken?
I think teacher assistance, their role has changed dramatically over the years. I think that they're needed very much to help support kids that are different kinds of learners. We have very diverse kids coming to school, we have curriculum that's very, very challenging, and we're not meeting the needs of all our learners, we know that. But we can't expect one teacher with 25 students to do that. And here, she only has one mouth to speak out of at a time. I know as a classroom teacher for many, many years, it's very frustrating when you know what you need to do, but you cannot do it, because you're only one person. So I think our teacher assistants need to have more of them, I think they need to be in the lower grades full-time, but they aren't in kindergarten. I think they need to be trained in how to deal with different kinds of learning issues, and they need to be part of the IEP process to help us meet the needs of all kids and all learners.
Brian?
I have to definitely agree with what Kim is saying. We need more support staff. Teacher assistants, we don't have enough. The district keeps cutting them, you know, cutting them from full-time to part-time, and then just cutting them right out, especially at the elementary level. We have teachers that are at capacity, 25 kids. That's just, you know, all day long. We definitely need more for the teacher assistants and support staff.
Scott?
I think that the role of teacher assistants is critical to education, both generally and in South Kingstown. We have faced this. We have been faced with trying to balance in round numbers a $350,000 cut every year. We're halfway through those cuts from the state budget, or really from RIDE. I think that we can identify the cuts that have been made and the impact it's had on life in the classroom and the learning of our students. life of the classroom and the learning of our students. So part of being on a school committee is an endless process of trying to balance priorities. There would be nothing simpler than to have one priority. Okay, this year, we're doing DLI. And the complexity of being on a school committee, and I think the complexity of being a superintendent, and being a building-based administrator, frankly, the complexity of a teacher's life is, you're trying to balance 20 lives or 25 lives each with very different needs. And this is a balancing and rebalancing process, and I think it is time to take a look back at where we have come.
Thank you. Keith?
Yes. I assume when you refer to teaching assistants, that you're referring to staff in general. At least that's the response I'd like to give you. And I think teaching assistants have a critical role. I think they facilitate education, and I also think that our math coaches and our reading coaches and our other support staff are very important also. And I know that, I would echo Scott's sentiment, that it's a matter of continually finding that right balance, and the only thing that's guaranteed is change, which I know that's a tempting response. But honestly, I think the conversation that I've witnessed and what I've seen in our school district is, we do have high standards, and our standards are higher than before, and as such, we need to make sure that we have the staff in place to ensure that those standards can be met without compromise.
Michelle?
I believe that the role of our teaching assistants and all of our support staff, in fact, is a critical one in our district, as it is in other educational settings. That said, I'm also acutely aware of the fact that we've cut a number of positions over the years, but we're faced with that, and not to be redundant, but we're faced with that delicate balance between balancing the budget, keeping the needs and wishes of the taxpayers in mind, and providing a world-class education to our community.
Alicia?
I think that's a really important question, and as you can see, there's no easy answer, but it's true, we're receiving less state aid, and, you know, property taxes can't just keep going up every year indefinitely, and balancing the school budget is a really arduous task. So that's kind of comes back to, like, we can't have it all, and I think we need to stick with really the nuts and bolts and make sure things are going well at the day-to-day level for kids. In support staff, I would include, you know, librarians, social workers, and special educators. A lot of positions have been eliminated, and it's been said that it's for less student need, and on the other hand, we're having an increase in administrative positions and new initiatives, and so it's definitely a delicate balance, as everyone's saying. And I would wonder what the teachers and support staff themselves would say about the staffing levels in the schools. I think we really need to look to them and see how they feel, all of them, really. Thank you.
Jonathan?
Yes, thank you. So yeah, the balance is definitely a right, good word on this question, but we have seen very significant reductions. I talk about this all the time, so maybe I sound like a broken record to people who pay close attention. But over the last seven or eight years, we have had 100 or more full-time equivalent positions reduced, and this has happened as our enrollment decline over that same timeframe is in the ballpark of 350. So you can see that the reductions have been pretty significant. Yes, money is a concern, but one of the primary reasons I have voted against three out of the four budgets is because I have asked for, what is the systemic look to evaluate the impact of these reductions? And I really don't think that's too much to ask for, but apparently, the other members on the school committee and top administration do feel like it is because it hasn't happened, and I would just like to understand the balance. I think everybody would like to understand the balance, so we know what we're giving up, when we're choosing to reduce the budget or not increase the budget as much, and to lose those staff members.
Andrew?
What employer wouldn't want to give you the tools necessary to be effective in your job? It wouldn't happen in business, for sure. So if you need assistance, you should get them. But that's the carrot, I guess. The stick is that you have to be effectively using them, and so you have to figure out how to measure your effectiveness with the assistant. And with regards to the money, it seems to me that by placing emphasis on edge programs as opposed to core programs, we're not spending our money right, so I don't think there would be that much difficulty in making sure that assistance happens.
Kevin? The advantage of going last. I did look up some of the numbers in our average classroom size, and quite frankly, they're not that bad. They are well below the contractual size limits, and some of them are significantly lower. For example, kindergarten, we have 16.58 kids in the average class right now, but 16.58 kids are different in every class. You can have one class with 19, and another class with 12, and they could be totally different kids with totally different needs. So I go back to my conversation about driving it down to the level at the teacher level. If we need more TAs, we need to address that and help those teachers. My kids were in kindergarten, and they had Miss Cindy. She ran a great classroom, and in those days, we had very high levels. South Carolina was bursting at the seams. My son was in that large class, and she did it. I don't know how she did it, but she was one of, if anybody remembers, Miss Cindy. So again, you drive down to the level and try to work it out. We have lost, just so everybody knows, in the last six years, from state funding alone, 2.6, excuse me, 2.4 million dollars, and we have another 800,000 to go, so it's a struggle.
Our next question deals with Common Core standards. What curriculum changes, if any, would you support, and what policies would you like to see in place to shape curriculum? And what role do you envision teachers having in shaping curriculum and related policies? Brian?
I feel that the teachers have the best answer to that. There are professionals, but professionals that we have are right here in this district. We need to abide by what they are training, go to school for, so that the education is taught nicely.
Scott?
Whether it is Common Core standards or some other set of standards, education is advantaged, as there are standards that drive the teaching process. Common Core has been much debated. Frankly, several states pulled away from that. Indiana was probably the most notable. They then spent three years developing the Indiana Common Core standards. There's been some concern about the product that they came up with. Frankly, I think that our teaching staff is very talented, and as universal standards are identified, it's our teachers who will make that a reality in the teaching-learning process with our students. I trust our teachers.
Keith?
I'm comfortable with Common Core standards, and I say that based on my understanding of them, but I believe I started this conversation saying, I don't have a hundred trillion education. I look towards the teaching staff and the administration, and to basically the other experts that identify what the standards are needing for our students in the future. If they're higher standards, then I'm all for that. I think that on a global scale, I think that our standards have been lacking, and I think what I like best about higher standards are basically, our universities in this country are really the envy of the entire world. They send their students here. The Nobel Prizes that were handed out just recently, the majority of those recipients were foreigners coming to our universities to study and teach. So I think a higher standard does go to closing that gap, it does go to equity issues, and ensuring that those students have the ability to succeed at that level.
Michelle?
In my opinion, we need standards of some sort, and I do believe that we should be teaching to the highest of standards. A little more than 10 years ago, a survey was done across the state of Rhode Island, and since my area is mathematics, that's what I can talk about. When the results of this survey came in, it was found that across the state of Rhode Island, just the state of Rhode Island, there were 27 different definitions of what constituted Algebra I. We can't have that in a state with only 36 districts, 27 different definitions. We need some commonality. Employers and colleges should be able to look at a young person's transcripts and know that they took Algebra I, and it has a similar meaning. And I rely on our teachers to teach to high standards and to carry them out.
Alicia?
I really agree with the tenants of Common Core in what they were intending to do, certainly on a national level, but I think missing from the Common Core state standards is a serious weigh-in from teachers that are actually in that expertise, like English Language Arts and Math, in developing the standards to make sure that they are, in fact, age-appropriate. And so I would say that I think teachers, again, need more leeway in developing their own curricula, and I understand that certain mandates are coming from the state and federal government, and we have to align with them to a degree, but I think we could certainly trust our teachers more and to use discretion with them.
Jonathan?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's so much the standards. We have always had standards, as a couple of people have said. I think the focus on the testing to kind of, quote-unquote, enforce the standards has been the bigger concern. I'm happy to talk to people that want to educate me more about the standards themselves. I think, working off of that, that the crisis in education in America is not quite what some would lead us to believe, and I think sometimes people try to create a sense of crisis to bring about very drastic changes. And so when you look at the international PISA tests, considering the diversity of our population and the size of our country, we do quite well. So can we improve? Yes. Is there a crisis? I'm not quite sure that that's the case. And so much of this is really avoiding the greater societal needs that our children have, whether they're warm, whether they're fed, the stability of their homes, much more than what our teachers are doing and what the standards are.
Andrew?
Well, I think Common Core was federal interference with curricula. Shouldn't have happened. It's a shame that it did. Up until that point, the federal government wasn't involved with curricula. I think the department should make the choice of the curriculum that's used. I think we need to collectively figure out a measure of effectiveness, and it needs to be...we need some continuity to the curriculum. It seems like right now, we're in perturbance. We're changing things too rapidly for everyone involved, teachers and students alike. And that's it.
Kevin?
Common Core, and before that, No Child Left Behind, with federal mandates. I travel extensively for my job, and one of the things that shocked me, I've actually somewhat lived in other parts of the country, I've traveled so much, and in other parts of the country, public education is nowhere near the quality that we demand in New England. And I believe Common Core was an offshoot of that. When I would go down to especially parts of the southeast and working with people down there, they would say, "You're sending your kids to public schools? What are you...you're a horrible parent." So I think Common Core was kind of an answer to try to figure out, you know, can we bring up the standards of the schools? And it's a difficult subject, because you're trying to have a situation where a kid moved from Florida to Rhode Island, it's somewhat dissimilar, and that quite frankly is not the case right now. But also, you don't want to take all that responsibility and all that magic inside, put it away from the local teachers. So I would advocate for, to stay within whatever federal and national state guidelines, but then again, empower the teachers to try to work with those systems to educate the child.
Kim?
Well, first of all, I agree with everything that Jonathan said, so if I could take that, and then I'll add my own two cents. I do believe that standards are necessary. But Common Core was created without much teacher input and not really much teacher buy-in, but teachers have to adhere, obviously, because it's part of their job and part of their evaluation system. But I do think that we need to have standards, and that we need to allow teachers some autonomy in how and when to implement them, incorporating student interests and needs. I also think that with Common Core and the push for standards and high-stake testing and big business interference in our educational system, unfortunately, we have a new philosophy where kids have to do sort of what I call seat time, whether it's appropriate or not for the lesson. Kids that may be seriously, like my own two daughters, over Kurt's Corner, very confused by math, that you have to be exposed to the curriculum. It's beyond them, they don't understand it, they're both flunking, and they're going to sit there, and they're going to get that curriculum even though it's not appropriate, and I know those teachers know it's not appropriate, but they have no avenue to address it.
Out of respect for everyone's families, it's now eight o'clock, and I've got a bunch more questions that we're never going to get to. So I will offer you each one minute for closing arguments or closing statements, to kind of sum up anything that was not covered or would have been covered had we gone through these next bunch of questions. And while you guys are straining those things in your mind, I just want to thank the audience for their attentiveness and your participation here in tonight's forum. Seeing how we started out, or started that last question with Brian, we can begin our closing statements with Scott.
I want to thank you, Ron, and thank all of those of you who came out this evening. I find that, having been on the school committee for so long, discussions about education help to clarify the issues, to test my own thinking about directionality. Frankly, I think that the questions this evening have identified differences, occasionally sharp differences, among the candidates, and about where the district will be heading. What I would urge everybody is vote. This makes a big difference. This is about where we're going, both in the South Kingstown School District and in the town of South Kingstown.
Thank you. Keith?
Thank you for holding this forum, and thanks to everybody for coming out. I know it's an effort, and it shows that your heart's in the right place. I've had the pleasure of serving this town for the last two years on the school committee. I've given a good faith effort to do everything I can to fulfill my role as a school committee member, keep my focus on students, to keep it on education, and to keep it on my town, and to make certain that this can be a community that can come together. And I think education is the perfect opportunity where we can come together, because I think we'd all agree, whatever side of the issue you're on, we can all agree it's about the students, and it's about, they're our children, this is our family, and I have a focus on common ground, and I would possibly, with a chance, thank you for giving me the chance to service, because I've spent a very humble length, and thank you. I love your support in November.
Michelle?
I too would like to thank the teachers and the support staff for hosting this. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for people in the community to hear the candidates' opinions on matters that are important to our community. In my... In my opinion, public education is the great equalizer. And I look forward to continuing to serve on the school committee. And if I am re-elected, I will continue to put children, families, and teachers at the center of every decision I make. Please come out and vote.
Alicia.
I think as Scott pointed out, there are differences amongst all of the candidates in where we stand, but I think certainly one thing that we all hold in common is that we really love South Kingstown and South Kingstown schools, and we believe in successful education in our town. And regardless of who gets elected, I think that we should all try to work towards finding what our common ground is and listening to each other and being open to other perspectives. And certainly, supporting our teachers and support, our teachers and students the best that we can. And thank you for listening to my ideas.
Jonathan.
Yep. Thank you, Ron, for running such a good forum, and Kathy, Mike, and Laurie's out there, and anybody else who was involved in putting this together. I really appreciate it. It was very professionally done. Definitely is a value to the community to have this forum. I like the fact that every month, we do recognize teacher and support at our school committee meetings. And often, the ones who I know, a lot of times, I would call them starfish savers, just talking about the young child who's throwing starfish back in the ocean, trying to save them. And teachers do save our children. And education is not just about academics. Academics is incredibly important, but we need to be thinking about children in a very holistic way. Teachers get that. I get that teachers get that. I'm not sure that administrators and elected and public officials do understand that all the time, or don't keep that with them all the time. I think that we need that more in our district, and I hope there will be some, I hope to return to get re-elected, and I hope I will have some independence with me to help me with my efforts.
Andrew.
Thank you. I'm running because I don't like the direction that I see things going. And I don't think it's because individuals are, are trying to break the system in any way. What I think is happening or not happening is holistic planning, and I want to see us do that better, and so when we, we can align these edge projects with core projects. And, you know, we're trying to prepare students to be contributing and discerning citizens. And you can all tell with this election that we have a population that is not discerning. So let's try and make it better for the next presidential election.
Thank you.
I also want to thank everybody for coming, our union partners for inviting us. I also want to thank the people up here at this table, every single one of us. This is hard. This is not easy stuff. These are our kids, everybody's passionate about it, and all my years on the committee and all the parents I've ever interacted with, every one of them have the exact same thing at heart. It's about their kids. If you can't be passionate about that and understand why a parent is not passionate about that, then you shouldn't do this job. Everybody who came up here today obviously has that in their heart, because like I said, this is hard. But it's hard for a reason. This is complicated stuff. It is not easy. You have to be able to work with others, you have to be able to process a lot of data. I think we've done well in this district. I'm very proud of my partners up here. It's not hard to figure out kind of where we all sit on most of these subjects. I consider myself a very good listener and a very good decision-maker, and I always talk to the constituents in this town. I did look at it the other day. I've answered between phone calls and emails, over a thousand emails. So I hope to continue that and be re-elected or re-elected in November. Thank you.
Kim.
Thank you, and work for coming out. I'm hoping that on November 8th, people will consider voting for some of the independents. You've got five good choices up here. I hope that for a necessary, people will be able to leave the school committee and drive the schools of South Kingston in a really positive direction. I think the biggest challenge is really to take a look at that achievement gap and to accept that South Kingston is a diverse community, celebrate that it's a diverse community as well, and realize that not every student in South Kingston is a high-achieving, sports-wise student, that we have many, many kind of learners here, many different kinds of students coming from different backgrounds, and we need to have programming in place, supports in place for all our learners.
Brian.
I'd like to thank all of you for coming out, and I'd also like to thank Ron for, for doing such a great job. He, he just does a great job here and in the schools, so thank you. I also, I also want to thank everybody for coming out here, because it's not easy. I'm nervous, it's me, but all of you know, we all have passion, but we also need some change, so that we have a way of learning something new, something different, something that's not, not going to just keep going the same way. No more status quo. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming. We really appreciate your time and energy and interest in keeping this a top-notch school system that we have here in this town. Thank you all, and thank you all for coming.
Thank you.